Today is Tuesday, April 27, 2021. Time is 1:00 P.M. This is a special meeting with our Panhandle Health District officially calling this meeting to order. Attending are Commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Filios. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. And at this point, I will turn over our one and only business item, which is the Ph.D. Annual Report, to our Director Laura Whalen. Take it away, Laura.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm pleased to be here and wanted to provide, I guess, a special thanks just for the time and effort you all put into the process to nominate our new Cootney County Representative. I really appreciate all the thought that went into that. With me today, I have Christine Crummer, our Financial Officer, as well as I've brought Don Duffy, our Division Administrator, and he has been our Operations Chief and for a while, our Incident Commander in the COVID response. And I'm going to ask him in just a bit to speak to our immunization efforts in Cootney County for COVID-19. In your package today, the usual, I've got Client Served, just our Services brochure. Our budget hearing is 27 May at 11:00, and we rotate who the Chair of that is, and this year, it's Commissioner Filios from Cootney County.
Honored.
So we very much appreciate your attendance.
You're very welcome. Looking forward.
Yeah. And Christine will be spending some time, the majority of our time here, talking about our proposed FY '22 budget. I've included Health District Code. Health District Code seems to be a moving target, and it may change a little bit with House Bill 316 as that goes through the process. And that is not included because that's not yet law. And 1060 is not in here because that's not part of our Health District Code, although it will be woven into 316. 1060, as you recall, is Senator Vix's bill that should the Health District ever have the need to institute an order to protect public health, that order would be in effect for seven days until within seven days, the County Commissioner and which the affected citizens would have to, the B.O.C.C. would have to thumbs up or thumbs down that mandate. So it essentially puts the health decisions in the County Commissioner's hands. Certainly with the advice of the Health District Board, should you choose to have us come talk about that, which we'll just see what happens as I mean, this was the first order since the Health Districts have been around, the first pandemic since the Health Districts have been around, that was put into effect. And the Health Districts have been around since 1970, and in code, Idaho is unique in that we have seven public health districts versus county health departments, which provides a little, it provides, I think, for some more subject matter expertise rather than having smaller county health departments and a more ability to deploy people where they need to be, as the case may be. The boards, as you're all well aware, are governed by the Health Court, which is made up of seven members in North Idaho, one that is nominated by each of the five counties and two at large. One of the at-large, in code, should be a physician representative, and Dr. McLandres fills that spot for us. We do offer both physical health and environmental health services. Environmental is a little bit more regulatory, providing the subsurface sewage oversight and the childcare inspections, the restaurant food safety services and inspection that we do, as well as small water systems, the PWSs, the wells, people that have less than 27 hookups. Our physical health side, certainly we have a home health arm that visits, provides home health services, as well as a Nurse Family Partnership and Parents' Teacher Program, which provides services to at-risk young mothers, where we go into homes and work with that mom or that family to provide resources and education and guide them. Of course, it's all voluntary, and I just, it's marvelous. Our Nurse Family Partnership Program will pair an RN with a new mom when she's pregnant, and that nurse will be with that mom till baby is two, if the mom so desires. Certainly, our community health assessment shows us, you know, our top priorities in North Idaho are mental health, suicide, and substance use, opioid prevention, and access to care. So we have a lot of focus on those issues. We, our clinical arm, Women's Health, primarily prevention-focused, as well as a focus on STD and HIV prevention and treatment, immunizations, of course, and our WIC program. Epidemiology is a program that's unique to the Health Districts. We have, there's over 70 reportable diseases, and I have them included in your packet. The top 10 are always the same, generally speaking. Sometimes positions flip, but certainly chlamydia, which is a sexually transmitted disease, and I think Cootney County bore that out this year as well. That's our number one in Cootney County. And the reason a disease is reportable, because if it is caught and the spread, it's communicable, very communicable, and if we stop the spread, then we prevent, in chlamydia's case, infertility in women as time goes, as the disease progresses. Number two is Hep C, which is a viral infection, and that is, and I think that bore out here as well, Hep C was the number two. And gonorrhea is number three of the top 10 in North Idaho, and Cootney had both gonorrhea and syphilis this year. Cootney also had a case of interest, I think, tuberculosis. We don't see a lot of TB in the area, but we do see some. We had 10 cases of HIV. I don't break that out by county for privacy purposes, but that is a number that seems to be holding steady or increasing year to year, new cases of HIV. I don't see any cases of AIDS this year. That's when the CD4 count drops to a certain point, and HIV is then called AIDS. But there's such treatment now for HIV that often it doesn't get to the point of AIDS. So, you know, we are, we are the boots on the ground. We're your local public health district. You know, we are, as I said, governed by a Board of Health, which is appointed a member by each of the counties. So, I mean, the 15 county commissioners are really who I report to, happy to come anytime and talk about whatever you would like to talk about. You know, we, with legislation that is looking like it's progressing, House Bill 316, and that's going to change the face of a few things as far as state funding and county funding. I mean, the state is, I'm sure you're all well aware of through IAC what 316 will do. It will ask that the counties, rather than revenue sharing, use the savings in the Indigent and CAT Fund to fund the state portion of the Health Districts. So again, that's not in stone yet, but I think it's getting closer to being in stone. With that, I'd like to give the floor to Mr. Duffy for a few minutes to talk about our COVID-19 immunization efforts. Don?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's nice to be with you here. I don't mean to stand, but I'm trying to find a microphone.
Okay.
So just to kind of give you an update of where we are, you know, we have a number of partners. There's 39 partners throughout the five counties that have assisted Panhandle Health District in the distribution of the vaccine. Even though we have administered 26% of the 155,000 doses that we've received, clearly, we could not have done this on our own, and we're very grateful. Here in Cootney County, of course, Cootney Health, Northwest Specialty Hospital, Heritage Health, were and continue to be great supporters of administering the vaccine, plus many, many other small practices here throughout Cootney County help us in that endeavor. So far to date, 31% of our population in the five northern counties is fully vaccinated. That's a total of 60,452 people. 37% of individuals in the five northern counties have received at least one dose of the vaccine. These percentages that we see in our counties are pretty similar throughout the state of Idaho. If you look at the five counties, Cootney is also 31%. Shoshone County is 33%, and to our low of Boundary County is at 24% fully vaccinated, to give you some of the numbers that we're looking at. Also, an interesting fact is of the 60,000 that are fully vaccinated, we have had what are called 29 breakthrough cases, or individuals that were fully vaccinated and then contracted COVID-19. So a very low number. These vaccines are not 100%. They're well over 90%, and that's so far, that's exhibited what we're seeing here in Cootney County. So it's showing a very efficient manner to protect individuals from COVID-19. And I believe it's the reason we're starting to see, one of the contributing factors to seeing drops in cases, drops in hospitalization, and even drop in deaths that we've been seeing here for the last couple of months, and very happy to see that. We are seeing, when we started out, as you know, we saw a significant increase in demand and not enough supply. Holy moly, that was a tough first month or so. So many people wanted the vaccine, and we were just not getting the supply we wanted. And now it's completely reversed. We have excess of supply of vaccine, and the demand is falling off significantly right now. So we've taken a little different philosophy from a Health District's perspective. You know, first, it was build it and they will come, set up these permanent sites, and people will come and get vaccinated. And now it's build it and go and find them. So we're establishing some mobile vaccination teams so that we might go to businesses and organizations in small towns throughout the five northern counties, so that everyone has the opportunity, if they wish to, to be vaccinated. So that's a move we're making. In fact, here, I believe, if I wrote the dates, I did.
May 7.
On May 7, we're here at Cootney County for first doses, and that'll follow up on May 28 and June 7 for their second dose. And this, what we're doing here is similar to what we're doing around the five counties. We have a big day that'll, here in the middle of May, where we're going to go up to Silverwood, and they say there's 750 people there that are wanting to be vaccinated. So we're really moving to mobile teams. And that reminds me, you know, we have just some great volunteers, our Medical Reserve Corps that helps us do this, but also our National Guard. What a tremendous asset that has been in getting this vaccine into people's arms throughout the five counties. We've just really appreciated their help. Just a couple of things just to mention, you know, as we look forward at what might, what we might see, is, you know, we're a little concerned about the variants that are out there that you've all heard about. So far, there's 15 cases of variants throughout the five counties, so we haven't seen a spike like we've seen in other parts of the world, and certainly including other parts of this country. But that's something we follow very closely. It appears that the vaccine does a good job preventing contracting the variant as well, or if you get the variant, your symptoms aren't quite as severe. But time will tell on that. These variants change, and it could change yet again. And so we're following that. You've also probably heard that both Pfizer and Moderna have talked about a third dose or a booster shot. We're kind of waiting to see where that goes. I think that if that were to happen, it'll probably fall on most of that. A majority of that will fall upon Panhandle Health District to administer those third doses. I think some of our partners, you know, they've been in this fight for a long time, been in the trenches, and I'm not sure that they will continue as we, if that were to become reality. So time will tell. Of course, other in the news, you've heard about the Johnson &amp; Johnson, or the Janssen product, the one-dose product. There was a pause put on that. That pause has now been lifted and approved by the State of Idaho for us to continue vaccinating for the Johnson &amp; Johnson product. And we're very, very pleased with that. Again, there's been 6 million doses administered. We've had 14 individuals that have had the blood clotting issue, which is severe and frightening for sure, but still a very, very high effective rate. Thus, they lifted the pause and were back to vaccinating. We're also moving away from our permanent sites. We're actually moving toward doing more of that in Ph.D. offices. Here in Cootney County, we were at the fairgrounds, as you know, and what a tremendous partner they have been. I can't even begin to describe how flexible they have been for us in providing facilities. And now, as you know, they're getting into their season right now, this spring and summer. And so we will, we will be departing using their facilities in May. And we are working with North Idaho College. We'll have sites set up at the downtown location and also out on their Lancaster location. And we'll be offering three days a week, three days a week of clinics, providing opportunities for people to be vaccinated, both in the evenings as well as on Saturdays. And we think that Lancaster is a great location as we reach out to Post Falls and Rathrum and Spirit Lake, some of those areas. So very pleased with where we are today. Still more work to do on getting this vaccine out, and I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions for Don?
Are you planning to do any vaccinations at the fair?
We are, Commissioner, absolutely. And once again.
You've got 10 days.
Well, yeah, we definitely are. I was just speaking with our Incident Commander, Joe Rigello, about that this morning at our Incident Command meeting, and the fair is already planning on us being there. And we're going to be right out front, and they're talking about different things, like if you bring your whole family and get vaccinated, you'll get into the fair free. Now, that's not etched in stone yet, but that's how they're forward-thinking about this vaccine and working with us. So yeah, we'll be there, I'm sure, all 10 days, Commissioner.
Excellent. Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you. Good job. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you, Commissioners. And with that, if there's no further questions for myself or Don, I'm going to turn this over to Christine Crummer, our Fiscal Officer, to walk us through the FY '22 budget proposal.
Take it away, Christine. You might want to pull the mic in. It's, try to get it to within a few inches if you can. More, more, more.
More, more, more.
Absolutely.
All the way up.
Yeah, because we need to be able to record. Nancy needs, okay. Thank you. Go right ahead.
So this is the FY '22 budget.
Uh huh.
Our operational budget for the next fiscal year, and it was prepared based on the fact that HB 316 would not pass.
Would not pass.
We needed to make a decision. I chose to be consistent with years past. So we typically do a funding formula review. We look at the property and valuation changes, the county formula, and then the budget summary. So we're going to take a higher-level review of the state funding formula. As you recall, it's, the state provides 67%. They match 67% of the county efforts. On this page that you should have in your packet, the large Excel spreadsheet with a yellow and blue bar, you'll see that House Bill 285, the state appropriation, is anticipated to be a total of $9,700,000 for fiscal year '22. Of that, District 1 would receive $1,299,500. I'm not going to look at the breakdown as we have in years past. So we're anticipating receiving $1,299,000. And whether that's allocated through HB 316, a portion from the counties, or entirely from the state, that's factored into the budget, the 1.2 million. So the next page is the Health District budget as a whole. You'll see that the original budget that was passed for fiscal year '21 was $12,409,000. We had to do a budget revision in January to accommodate COVID-related expenses. That was a budget increase of $2,243,000, bringing the revised budget to $14,653. The fiscal year '22 budget does include COVID-19-related expenditures in the amount of 1.5 million. So the total budgeted, budget amount for fiscal year '22 is $14,190,900. So when we compare that to the revised budget for fiscal year '21, it's a reduction of $462,000, a 3% decrease. What we have in the fiscal year '22 budget is personnel costs have been budgeted at 137 FTEs. 18.7 of those FTEs are related to COVID. If we back those out, then we're at 11835, and that's a decrease of .71 FTEs of what was originally budgeted in fiscal year '21. The personnel costs also include a 4% increase based on the Governor's recommendation for fiscal year '22 compensation guidance. And also, you'll see an increase to fringe benefits on the budget of $75,000. And what that is, is in fiscal year '21, health insurance was at $11,650. It's increased in fiscal year '22 to $12,930 per position. That accounts for that increase on the budget. So the total operating expenditures have decreased by $291,000. The majority of that is related to a reduction in COVID-related expenses. We anticipate that we'll be winding down, hopefully, with our COVID response. Total capital expenditures, a slight increase by $21,500. What we've included in capital this year is upgrades to the Bonner Ferry facility. Part of that was budgeted in fiscal year '21. We're rolling that forward to fiscal year '22. Those items were not accomplished. Two vehicles are budgeted, and also security systems and two outlying offices, you know, the badge swipes to get into the building and to get into various areas of the building. And the other thing that is budgeted is a slight increase in the capital principal payments for the Hayden facility. So we anticipate that Sandpoint will be paid off. It's slated to be paid off in September, and we have budgeted that those principal payments will be added to the Hayden facility. So the reason to do that is currently, the loan interest rate on the Hayden facility is 0%. There was an error when the loan was originally initiated. It resets every five years, and this past August, it reset to 0%. So the goal is to stage our payments to where the building will be paid off in that five-year window. So it's paid off by the time it resets again.
Oh, I see.
Our revenues. We anticipate no change or no use in board-committed funds. Last year, we had budgeted $40,000. We don't see the need to use board-committed funds in fiscal year '22. There is a decrease in program advances. Licenses and fees, there's an increase of $383,000. That's related to environmental fees. As you know, our construction industry in the Coeur d'Alene area, the five northern counties, is strong, and we're seeing that in the permits issued in the Environmental Division. Health service fees, a decrease of $431,000, and that is primarily due to home health. There's been a change in the reimbursement matrix, as well as we're seeing lower admits. Contracts and revenues, a decrease of $371,000. That's a net amount. The majority of that is, of course, related to COVID. But also, what we have that was not budgeted in last year is the HERSA grant, which stands for Health Resources and Services Administration. It's a three- It's a three-year grant that was awarded to the district in the amount of $333,000 a year, basically a million dollars over the three years. So that's included in that net amount. Donations and other, slight increase of $1,700. And interest, as you know, interest rates have dropped, so we've budgeted accordingly. Brings us down to county contribution. We're not asking for an increase in the county aid. That's remaining at 0% increase. Last year, the request was $1,237,000. Same request this year. The state appropriation amount, $1,299,500, bringing us back to a total budget amount of $14,198,500.
So Christine, two questions. Before the reset of the interest rate, what was the rate?
That interest rate was, and I wrote it down before I left, it was, it's just a matter of finding where I wrote it down. It was, I believe, 1.42%.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, it was under, it was under 2%.
Okay, cool. If 316 were to pass, am I correct in assuming that the state portion at one point, almost 1.3 mil, would be borne by the county?
The counties, correct.
Counties, excuse me, the five northern, okay.
Yes, the five northern counties, and it would be based on the same allocation, the 70%, 30% that is currently in statute. And if it passes, it will not be effective until March of 2022. So the counties would have to bear four months' worth of that $1,299. The state would bear the other eight months.
Understood. Okay. Okay, thank you.
If I might interrupt, Christine. The, um, thank you, Commissioner. The 70-30, 70% population, 30% valuation on, should House Bill 316 pass, is in code, although also written in there is should the five counties decide at the budget hearing that they want to do it some other way, they could come up with some other formula. For that, for the state aid portion that the counties would be picking up with 316, not for the county apportionment.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So Page 6 addresses the 70%, 30% funding formula for the counties. If we move on to the next page, which shows the statistics for population and valuation, we can look at the updates. And what I need to mention here, and I apologize for this, when I cut it from the Excel worksheet and pasted it into PowerPoint, I excluded the sources. So the source for population is the 2020 population estimate from the Idaho Department of Commerce. And the valuation source is from the Idaho State Tax Commission.
Okay.
So you can see on the upper half that the Cootney County population for fiscal year '22 is estimated at 167,161, an increase of 1,500 individuals. Valuation is currently estimated for fiscal year '22 at $22,692,204,000, an increase of $2,583,000. If we go to the next page, it shows the formula and how that, how those statistics change the dollar amount that is paid by the counties. So on the top portion, if we look at the population amount, that converts, and we're looking solely at the county aid component of $1,237,000. The county dollars for Cootney County would be $586,000. The pop, or, excuse me, the valuation component would be $244,500. The sum of those two would be $83471. So it's an increase to Cootney County. It's our shift and drift between the counties. It would be an increase of $5,612 to Cootney County. The next page shows the average increase over the last 10 years, and that increase is 1.65%. You'll see in fiscal year '19 and '20, there wasn't, was not an increase, and in fiscal year '22, there's no increase requested. Page 10 shows the impact of inflation over the last number of years, actually, 32 years. And I've stayed with 1990 to be consistent with what has been previously presented in prior budget proposals. So in 1990, the health district budget was $2,781,000 compared to the $14,191,000 for fiscal year '22. If we adjust the 1990 budget for inflation, that is $5, excuse me, $5,674,000 compared to $14,191,000.
Right.
So in total, in 1990, that was $45.95 per individual compared to $57.42 in 2022. What we need to look at here is the other component of the breakdown. It shows that in fiscal year '22, the health district is funding itself by $47.15 per individual compared to $30 back in 1990. So we're able to be more self-funding than we were 32 years ago. So the next page shows the pie chart and breaks down the percentages of our funding sources. So 50% is coming from contracts. The magenta, 31%, is coming from our fees. State and county funds are 9% each. We have a very, very small amount coming from interest and other, and then a small component coming from use of reserves. The next page brings us back to the budget, the budget summary. Are there any questions?
Interesting. Questions? Pretty straightforward. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just for the benefit of everyone listening in, could you please explain, Christine, if you would, the 70-30 allocation?
So the 70-30 allocation is based on state code. And that would be Code 39-424.
425, yeah.
And it states that 70% of the amount to be contributed by the counties shall be apportioned among the various counties within the health district on the basis of population. 30% of the amount to be contributed shall be apportioned among the counties on the basis of taxable market value for assessment purposes.
Which in the case of Cootney is somewhere around $22 billion?
Correct.
Okay.
Will any adjustments be made if the census shows a different number than the agency that you mentioned?
Interesting question. I've never experienced that. I don't have a solid answer for that, but would be happy to get back to you on how that has been handled in the past.
Anecdotally, we're hearing something in excess of 170. I've heard as high as 175. I think that's probably high, but it wouldn't surprise me if we've exceeded the 170. But that's strictly anecdotal at this point. Okay.
A lot of this seems to be at this point.
I guess the latest census indicates that we were the second fastest-growing state. So we grew what, by 17%? I guess it was Utah led the nation at 18% last year.
No, decade, last decade.
Was it the decade?
Yes.
Oh, that's right, since the last census. Forget, yeah, apologize. Yeah, that's right. It could be one year. Okay.
Well, we're used to dealing in one year.
Well, yeah, you're right. We're used to, exactly.
We have to switch.
Any other questions for anyone? None?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please.
And just anecdotally as well, Coeur d'Alene was on the front page of the Wall Street Journal today.
Oh.
For growth.
And not in a good way.
So a couple of things. With 316, as it moves, and I think things are going to start going a little more rapidly, Christine and I will, if it passes, when it passes and is signed, present what that would mean to each county. And, you know, certainly, I'm sure IAC has kept you in the loop on, it would also mean the end of the Indigent Fund and the savings. That's how they are proposing that the state aid portion be picked up by the counties is through the savings of the Indigent Fund. So as those numbers become more clear, we will share them with you all. And a reminder, on 27 May, 11 o'clock, they do ask that the chair be present. Of course, you're all welcome. But they ask, in code, it specifies the chair. If for some reason that isn't possible, then just please, in your minutes, in your resolution or some such thing, that you appoint someone else.
Okay, I will be there.
Thank you.
Two things.
Yes, go.
Wall Street Journal, it was about how popular we are, about come to Coeur d'Alene. And they showed a beautiful picture of downtown Coeur d'Alene. Even downtown looked good. And so just to clarify that, the second thing is, this has been a tough year, and I think you all have done a great job. Not always perfect, but pretty darn good.
You have no idea what that means. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, and I'd have to second that. This has been a very tough year for you. Of course, we heard a lot of it, too, but you especially, and it's unparalleled. It's as you indicated earlier, Laura, when was the last time anything like this had occurred?
Well, and it's the staff. I mean, we have such staff that pull together, certainly rocky at times, but we just, we, they responded and are continuing to do so in a manner that is just noteworthy.
And I think that the challenge was especially compounded for you folks because it wasn't simply the substantive issues of, you know, the effectiveness of masks, but also the constitutional issue that was raised that government, in fact, have the right to do what they did in terms of infringing on individual liberties. So it was a compounding, compounded issue. So thank you for weathering it as well as you did.
Thank you all.
Anything else? Okay then, public comment? Hearing none? 1:40, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.